I'm Doug Sires. I'm going to chair tonight as previous chair. The Anna isn't here yet. If she does come, we'll let her take over. But for that, we like to do a call to order and also do a roll.
Hinkins?
Here.
Bowersacks?
Here.
Oldest?
Here.
Pregnant?
Here.
Sires?
Yeah. Item three is approval of the agenda. Make a motion. We approve the agenda as written.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. Item four, approval of P and Z commission meeting minutes from June 19th, 2023.
Make a motion to approve those minutes?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That passed because there wasn't here. Item five. I don't see on the agenda here where we asked if there's anybody in the audience that has anything to say. That is not about what's on the agenda. Is there anybody here? Any comments? Okay, that would go on. Item five, Lakeside Fellowship Church Site Plan Amendment. Is there anybody here who'd like to speak to that? Yes?
Yeah.
Okay, would you please come up to the podium? Tell us your name and your address? And if you represent a firm like that.
My name is Trevor Mears. I'm a pastor at Lakeside Fellowship, 1121 West Bridge Road. So I'm on the staff there at the church. And I'm just going to do a few introductory comments about the project and what it means for our church. One of the things that Lakeside Fellowship has always been most proud of is that we're great partners with the community. We actually just got that church on the square yesterday, we're doing that again this coming Sunday. And throughout our history, we've always been very connected. We're excited about continuing to work with Pope City, including this commission. We're honestly counting the days until we get to move into this new classroom addition. We have been able to grow right alongside Pope City over the last 18 years. And we're very blessed, especially with the fact that we've got such a wide range of ages in our church, especially with our kids. Our nursery is packed weekend and week out. And we have so many kids, actually, that a lot of our adult ministries are meeting around town. So we use Miller Park to shelter there, we use Lake Surfer Learning Center. Because we just can't fit everyone into our current building. That's why we're interested in this classroom addition. So it's definitely not a if you build it, they will come situation. They've already come, in fact, they've come beyond or in other places. So that's why the classroom addition has moved to the front of our priorities. We, in our long-term plan, we originally anticipated that an auditorium might be phase two. But because of the needs of the church, we decided we need that classroom addition to be the next phase. And this gives us the classroom space that we need, also creates a bigger lobby in our techs, which is really critical for before and after our services that we have people gather there. And we're really excited about the fact that this addition will also allow families to stay onsite. They'll all be on the same campus together. So a lot of times now, people will drop the kids off for their activities and they will go meet somewhere else in town. We'll be able to now keep them on the same campus more often, just reduce the amount of travel time and also just move around the town, especially during winter time. So another thing we're excited about with this particular plan is that as part of our community involvement, we want our facility to be a facility for the community as well. So our gymnasium is used pretty much every night during the winter months and many mornings before work. And our soccer field is used by Pope City United, and that gets used year round, not year round, but throughout summer and fall and spring. And the plan that you're going to look at tonight preserves that soccer field. So that's one of the things that was important to us, too, is to be able to keep that in place. So we're going to adjust the dimensions of it a little bit, but we've collaborated Pope City United that we'll be able to keep that intact. And that'll be able to be used by soccer clubs throughout. So that's just a little bit about what the thinking is, why we need this building, and what we're using it for. And I will hand off to Mayla unless anyone has any questions for me.
Thanks. Thank you.
Jordan Collins, Studio Mayla Architecture Firm, 139 Fourth Street, West Nyla. I'm the project architect on this project, this addition. And we brought this board that basically shows kind of the plan that the church has tasked us with completing for them. You can see kind of the overall site plan with 1.1 being the existing building, 1.2 being this addition, and then 1.3 being a future sanctuary addition. The goal of this project, this phase, is to create a connection between the first phase and the sanctuary. The sanctuary being similar in size and slope of roof as the first phase. So this project really is the connection between those two pieces. And once complete, you'll see basically this building here opposed with the slope roofs. The materials on the project are all architectural precast, curtain wall glazing. And then the finishes of the precast are acid etch and sandblast to mimic the coloring of the first phase. It is a low slope roof and incorporates a new entry with a plaza. And similar features, metal coping caps and accent metals along the building. So just general description of kind of materiality of the building. And I can take questions.
Okay, anything? May I have some for you a little later?
Absolutely. Very good, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Travis, city engineers report on that.
So as you probably saw in your memo, there are a handful of comments. Those are not, those are just cleanup items we got revised in the middle of the day. I didn't have the chance to look at it, but I would assume that's all taken care of next day or two. We have listed three questions slash comments we'd like the commission to consider or discuss and give a recommendation to council on. The first being, as Jordan kind of alluded to, the pitching of the roof. You know, pushing that pitch down to the third phase and making sure that you're aware that that is what they're doing. It's not the original design that was shown on the original site plan. Item two is they are currently showing a an acrylic screening product that is a flat color that's going to match the building.
Can you back up just a second?
Yes.
What was shown on the original site?
So the original site plan was the building you have now, a smaller flat roof space, and then the opposing pitch. So essentially, they're just breaking it up into one more phase, as I understand.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Item two, they're currently showing a flat texture acrylic screening system for the roof mounted HVAC systems. They're currently showing it being wrapped around. We've made the recommendation that we should tie that into the existing building as to now draw attention to those HVAC systems. But we'd like you to discuss and provide a recommendation or consideration of that item. And then the intent would be to hide the stairwell similar to the original site plan. But it's on the exterior stairwell that's on the east side of the building. In our estimation, it accomplishes the same thing that was proposed on phase one. It's hidden from view, it's not super obvious, but we just want you to consider that as well. Because that was a discussion point originally in 2016 as well.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Travis?
Just regarding the screening and tying it into the existing building currently, and then the future building when it is built, have you heard back from the applicant on that recommendation at all?
Not specifically.
Okay.
Can I ask the architect how they feel about the suggestion that the engineers made about extending HVAC screen?
So I think that we were open to that suggestion. I think our only concern would be what we have to do once the third phase is built to modify that. But in general, I think we're open to exploring what that looks like.
So our thought right now, just to kind of bring that full circle, was to take it from the HVAC system to the west to connect to the existing building and then construct it in a way, such a way now, that when that third phase goes in, you do the same. So essentially, it more or less is a parapet wall without the weight and structural requirements of a parapet wall.
And it almost looks like the east side of that screening, the material for that could be repurposed when the third phase is done for that extension.
As long as that's a capability of the material. I'm not super familiar with the screening material, but it meets the requirements of the city.
Yeah, I think we're open to definitely, to that suggestion.
There's also this 10-foot elevation difference. Is the screen higher than the HVAC units?
Yes.
How much?
That's something that we can decide and plan. Typically, what we'll do is in our model, we can actually model that and then put a pin kind of wherever the person is standing to look. Typically, we do anywhere from 2 to 3 feet higher than the unit itself.
Okay, that's quite a bit, but.
I think it'll depend.
So you intend to look at that when you determine the actual height?
Yeah, and we'll have to look at how that intersects the building, how the, where the roof is at that spot. But the intent would be to fully screen it.
Okay. Any other questions on the screen? I'll move on to the stair. Is the stair exposed totally?
So they've.
Exterior stair.
Yeah, so they've kind of set it down into the ground so not the whole thing is exposed. But they've tucked it towards the backside of the building in an attempt to screen it from the public right away.
But you can still see it from that side. And are you suggesting that the screen is more?
Not necessarily. We just wanted, that was a key discussion item in 2016 when the original site plan went through. So that was more to contextualize what they're doing, that this is a similar treatment to what they did in the first phase.
And as I understand it, when they build the third phase, this goes away. So it's temporary, really.
Yes.
Any questions about that? Any other questions?
I mean, just a general comment, I guess. The screening, I think, would be real helpful for me if it was, you know, modified. When you think about it, the decisions we made eight years ago, or whenever that was, we approved something that was not in compliance with our architectural plan. Can't have a single slope roof in this zoning. We can't have a flat roof in this zoning. And we were hoping to not have a big box store look, that's kind of the issue with that. So part of what brought us around to the approval was having the future plan, you know, kind of counteract the existing single slope building. And now, when you put up, what I was seeing was a box next to that with another box on top with the screening. And I think by tying it into the building, it kind of alleviates some of that visual. And then tying it in, the future building also would help kind of alleviate some of that visual.
Sure.
So in other words, you're okay with?
Yeah. Based on what we have already done, I think this is a logical next step.
Yeah, I remember at the time, I don't see anything. I'm an architect, so I don't see it wrong. Think it looks good, build it up. Have some uniqueness, to a degree, is good also. Statistically, I don't have problems with it. Didn't before. And if I did, I wouldn't say anything. Okay, anything else? All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I would consider making a motion. The direction I will probably take with the motion is referring to this paragraph two and the screening reference there in the last two sentences of that issues paragraph two. And then recommend that the adapted plan be reviewed by staff prior to going to council so that it would not need to come back to us. Yeah?
Okay.
Is that an acceptable way to?
Yes.
Put together a motion?
Yep.
Okay, have a motion, we have a second.
So I make a motion that we recommend the council approval of the Lakeside Fellowship Church Site Plan Amendment subject to engineers and staff's comments and recommendations that are dated August 16th, 2023, with the caveat that adjustments be made to the screening or the utilities on the roof of the new structure as laid out in staff's comments, issue section, paragraph two, last two sentences. And that those adjustments be reviewed and approved by staff prior to going to council.
Okay, have a second. Okay, let's have a roll of both, please.
Pregnant?
Yes.
Sires?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Bowersacks?
Yes.
Oldest?
Yes.
Okay. Gentlemen, welcome to leave, and ladies, lady, welcome to leave. You didn't get to speak this time.
No, I got on.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Appreciate your addition. Okay. Big Creek Ridge Preliminary Flat. Developer would like to come forward, tell us who you are, what your address is.
Thank you. Dean Rogear with CDA Civil Engineering for the site, 4121 North River Hill Drive. Eric Grubbs is also here, owns the property, ECR LLC. This property is east of town, south of East North Side Drive. It's 49 acres and currently zone R1. You guys raised up it a year ago approximately. So we're sticking with the existing zoning. Basically, Eric's planning to construct a single-family subdivision, all single-family, large estate lots on the property and preserving the majority of the trees on the site. The layout, we've coordinated with property owner to the east also, this connection point. That is one of the things we need to request a waiver on, block length, very minor waiver. Maximum block length's 1320, 1360. So it's a small increase in block length that is part of our request. The other waiver that we had asked for also, we decided to change our mind and actually construct the sidewalks. Originally, we were going to request a waiver of sidewalk construction, supposed to bond, pay for in the future. But we decided, since we pushed the sidewalk back onto the property, that Eric decided he was going to go ahead and construct it. Main reason we weren't going to construct it is there's not a port to connect to right now, there's no sidewalks out there. So he thought, why do it? But instead of trying to figure it out in the future, Eric decided just to agree to construct that sidewalk. So that is one difference of what you have seen. Decided to go ahead and do that. And otherwise, that's pretty much it. It's large lot, single-family, working with the terrain we have out there. You have to answer questions if you want to add to this here.
Just a couple of minor things. We are looking to push the setbacks a little bit further back than what is the minimum, what's the minimum, 30 or?
35.
Okay. So we're going with a 40-foot setback to push the house back and the road a little bit, or make it more estate-like. Yeah, as Dean mentioned, you know, we're trying to save as many of the trees around the property. This down here is government-owned land, USA-owned land. So just try to keep it, you know, natural feel out there and keep as much wildlife on the property.
Are these gravel turnarounds, are they on adjacent property?
Yeah.
And that's?
Yeah, those are temporary turnarounds, so there's no plasters turnaround. We're hoping the timing of this one might work out if the property to the east develops near the same time. Eric's obviously been in communication with property owner to the east. So also going to talk to the property, so.
You're good with that.
Okay. I don't think he's made contact with the property in the south yet. We've got backup plans if.
Yeah.
If they are looking to the side.
Sure.
Yeah, we'll definitely have those conversations before.
Okay, thank you, Travis. Travis?
Yeah, so Dean covered a lot of it. Our recommendation tonight recommends that you make this recommend approval to council, subject to the developer signing a development agreement, finding responsibility for future improvement of the south or east North Side Drive. Per Pope City code, any subdivision along a non-conforming rural cross-section, the developers responsible for their half to bring it up to compliance up to a width of 15 and a half feet. We've been working with the developer to work on, to get a number. And Eric has agreed on the, on a price of three and a half foot curb and gunner section to take the existing 24-foot roadway and expand it to, on his half, it would be 27 and a half. That would ultimately be 31 when the other side develops. The recommendation is also subject to the developer requiring those easements that Doug was asking about. And those will need to be in writing, signed before we approve construction drawings. A few items worth noting, on the backside of these lots, the developer is proposing tree preservation easements so that those trees are not going to just be preserved on the public improvement side of things. Those will be something that are preserved long-term via final plat. So that is worth noting. As well as, as part of this subdivision, the developer would pick up the existing sanitary sewer, water main line, North Side Drive and extend that. The intent of so down, that would be the northwest corner. There will be an outlaw Z that is intended to be platted, platted and redeveloped independent of the subdivision. And as such, that outlaw would have to come back to your attention before it's allowed into redevelopment anyway. And would be subject to the Pope City subdivision regulations at that time.
Okay, as I understand it, this only, tonight is only for preliminary.
Correct.
So they'll come back with a final plat and it'll clear up some of the things that you just discussed.
So the process now is if the final plat is in substantial conformance to the preliminary plat, it does not affect the Z.
It will not.
No. But the preservation easement is shown on the preliminary plat, as well as there is a note on the cover sheet that says outlaw Z will have to be replatted in accordance with the subdivision and will need to be approved.
Do we approve the final plat? At all, not at all?
No.
Okay, all right, that makes it clear. Just one comment, I appreciate you doing the sidewalk. I'm under the opinion, I don't care where it is anymore, we're going to be building sidewalks. And so. Wise thing. Even though, somebody will use it. Other questions?
Just a question on the outlaw Z. So this is zone residential, so that'll be a home or that would go in there.
Yes.
What, how is that property going to be accessed?
Don't know that that decision has been made. Yeah, I really, I guess I don't know, we haven't done any.
Yeah, we're certainly trying to minimize access points to our major roads. That's certainly a concern.
I think it would either be, you know, one large lot, just one home, or potential for a small cul-de-sac, just to come in there. But, you know, it's going to come down to what's going to fit there. But I don't anticipate more than one access point to this parcel.
Has staff looked at all about what's on the north side of the road in that section?
Right now, it's a lot of small, single-family lots that really don't have a lot of coordination.
Okay.
And it would likely have to be somebody that comes and provides a single-family.
Okay.
And I think the way that that outlaw would have to redevelop, I don't think there is a way to lay out this land and get it access from the single access point that's being posed because of that floodway.
Okay.
That floodway ties into the existing box cover and it's fairly substantial, elevation and magnitude of flow. And so I think, I think the way that, and with the spacings, the way that they are, I don't know that we have an issue with the same access from that.
Okay. And I know for me, it would be helpful if it was across, if that new access point crossed the street from an existing access.
And that would be the intent. We always try and do that, just purely from a transportation standpoint. You want as few conflict points as possible. So at the time of redevelopment, we would look at that, what the current landscape is, what the current development interest is, that kind of stuff. And it may be something where we, depending on where we're at redevelopment, it may be something that when that goes to redevelopment, maybe we need to do an access management plan similar to what we've done third street, grid route, that kind of stuff. That kind of sets the long-term plan for that corridor.
Okay, anybody else?
Okay, I guess Doug, before we go, one thing worth mentioning is staff is in support, or the city engineer is in support of the block length just because of the difficult topography. So making that recommendation of approving that request.
I assume you speak for the staff also?
Well, Chelsea's sitting here, so I didn't want to do that, but.
We talked about it.
Yeah.
Yep.
How big is outlaw Z? 38 acres.
Oh, good. And we had in the past, I know we've had outlaw Zs, right? But similar to this, and been able to, okay, just thinking long-term, you all have been through that, you know, time and time again. But sometimes there's things come up, be like, all right. So it's good, thank you.
We missed stuff, too.
Well, yeah, just do our best.
Okay.
The most recent example of the outlaw, the way that they're doing it, would be the two commercial lots and crossroads plat two. Those were handled the same way, where they were planted as outlots and then had to be replatted prior redevelopment. It's a different zoning district, but similar treatment.
All right.
I'll make a motion that we recommend the council, how can we do that? Recommend the council approval of Big Creek Ridge Preliminary Flat, subject to engineers and staff comments dated August 16th, 2023. And also noting that this would include a recommendation for, to approve the extended block length in this development. And also noting, recommendation, subject number two, which is that a development agreement will be required for future improvement of East North Side Drive.
Thank you.
Second, sorry.
Got a second. Roll call, please.
Pregnant?
Yes.
Sires?
Yes.
Hinkins?
Yes.
Bowersacks?
Yes.
Oldest?
Yes. Okay. I'm sitting here with this comment, think that we need to name Ron, most valuable P and Z member. MVP of the P and Z. Thank you for always being there to do that for us.
I'm a good gentleman.
You do a good job. You do such a good job. You do such a good job, nobody else wants to do it. It's your own fault. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
You can go if you want, we appreciate you.
Thank you.
I'm seven, reports and particulars, council liaison first.
Sure. I don't have much, I really, really like this, this concept, bigger, something different. The, the different type of project coming through at a bigger lot, attracting different, you know, different folks in. We have a lot of closer, you know, there's some R ones and R one A's or whatever, but this is really, I really like this and it'll, I think, go really well within the community. And it just keeps going east, so. You know, it's like, it's gonna be like battle, we're gonna be building right next to the Ankeny's here, real soon. Just trying to get a good one for that, but. Other than that, can't think of anything major that we have been, I mean, major, we don't work a lot with, we talk about specifics, just trying to get the city, city hall going. We got, we have a lot of capital improvement items coming through for twenty-three, twenty-four, it's exciting, it's scary at the same time. Just keeping up with the demands of infrastructure, trails, buildings, you know, acquisition of, of land we need to, because we're thinking of the future. It's tough to do, going from not being, having any debt for many, many years, as, as with on council, we do always say, hey, I love this, you know? But things do change and, and so I would, I would, I would suggest if, if people come up and, and mention different things about spending and, and those types of things, to have them contact us, that we can talk with them, you know, the rationalization that we're not just doing things. As, we're certainly grassroots with not hiding behind anything. And so we appreciate your, your guidance through the, through the construction as well, because, you know, the construction acquisition, all those different pieces too. So with that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Chelsea?
I have nothing to report.
That's good.
Yeah.
Jenny?
Yes, sir.
Permission?
Any word, any word on East Hardware, they're going to start? I just asked the same question earlier.
I, I do not have an update from a building permit perspective. They are mowing their lot. Without reminder.
They were going to be open December first.
I know, I actually planned my, my Christmas stuff around that.
I did too.
I don't think December first is realistic, we can reach out, see if we have a timeline.
You know, if we could, because I know I came up with council last week.
Yep, I'm doing it right now.
One is there in the problem.
No.
Well, I'd just like to know.
Sure.
You know, just to know.
To tell everybody who's doing.
I have a lot of questions.
I'll have an answer, I'll have an answer tomorrow. I'm typing now.
Well, they'll see it tomorrow. Well, now you're getting an answer somehow.
I'll get an answer.
Then I have a question too, with people asking, is the former bait shop over here on Third Street, do you have any idea what that's going to become?
We, we don't, they're remodeling it.
Well, the remodel is because of the fire.
Yes.
So they basically were getting it back to a whole building, but she's had, the owner lives in New York and she's had a couple of different ideas, but no site plan, nothing like that, she knows she needs to do one before she does any more, the, again, the work she's done has just been because of that fire.
I know, there's a lot of talk around now.
Yeah.
I've wanted myself.
A bakery, a high-end restaurant, then you're thinking a bait shop?
Well, the two things that I've heard from her were originally was going to be a self-sustaining cafe. And now she didn't want to do that, and then she, I guess she's a photographer. So, but she does like portraits of food, or like fancy places. And so it was going to be like a studio, but then, again, I don't.
Does she have a connection to Polk City?
That's one of the two, like, which is the dealie, sort of deal there, like.
Because that one time, that was a beautiful, that was one of the nicer homes in Polk City.
But it's zoning.
Before the bait shop.
It's the dual zoning that makes it kind of, because it's a residential, commercial, right?
It's all commercial.
It's all commercial with a residence.
And I think it's limited to just one permitted use. As I, so it's limited to just a, just a bait shop and, and they come to us, because it.
Well, the bait shop's expired.
Okay.
So that's why no matter what happens, it has to be a site plan.
And then there is issue with parking with its current.
Correct. Correct.
Probably limit her coming from New York to go to the bait shop.
So would it be, to that, to that question, would it work somebody, like, I don't know.
I don't think she knows.
Someone in the liaison to her to kind of?
I've tried.
Talk about it, I mean, I am not saying you hadn't, but.
I think the fire and the financial strain that that has put on it has further stalled the project. Because of course, you only have so much time to redo it after a fire, so that it doesn't become a condemned building. There was insurance. So I, I know that she's, wants to, she bought it during COVID, so I didn't know, but I know she wants to do.
When was the fire?
Six months ago?
Yeah.
Guess I didn't know.
I, you know, I must be in the dark too, because I didn't realize it, I know there was a fire, but not to the point, that's why they're doing what they're doing? Just they're happening, I'm like, ooh, there's something happening. Bait shop bakery. Anything, something would be better than nothing, so.
I just have a couple of things circling back on stuff that we had talked about tonight. The first one is something Doug brought up, which is sidewalks. Currently, as I understand it, as a development goes in after, I think it was three years or two years, or something like that, any lot that's not developed,
Four years.
Four, oh, it needs to put in a sidewalk, but that is only for developments after that ordinance was done. We still have around our city developments that have one or two empty lots, in some cases, ones, lots that will clearly never be developed. And so there's sidewalks on both sides and there's an open spot. Is there anything that the city can do to promote those gaps getting filled in?
It's difficult.
Yeah, no, I.
It's very hard to, if you don't have a deferral agreement on record, or you don't have sidewalk bonds as a requirement with that, it's very difficult to get people to install sidewalks. The city could do a sidewalk project and do a special assessment, but the city can only special assess for fifty percent of the cost, and then the taxpayers have to pick up the other percent. So it's hard, it's difficult.
The homeowners, right, not the taxpayers, the homeowners have to pay the extra fifty percent.
No, the homeowners pay fifty percent, we can only special assess them.
I got you.
And then the city, the taxpayers, have to pick up the other part of the tab. We've had those conversations, it, it's difficult to get sidewalk connections made, we don't have a sidewalk program, the city does not have a sidewalk program. I don't know if that's something that we look into in the future, if we'd want to financially assist people in putting their sidewalk in.
Yeah, just, you know, when you're out and about walking and you run across these sections, it's just, just kind of shake your head or now and then, and.
We wish we would have done the sidewalk bonds earlier.
And then the, the other one that I wanted to circle back to was the access management plans. And, and in particular on some of our major roads, you know, coming in and out of the city. Is that something that we either need to do specifically for those roads? Or be an ordinance that is more general for a road status, I guess, or road, uh, transportation level? Making it harder to, or, or clarify the terms that you need to pass in order to add a right of way. And I'm, and then the next step beyond that is, is there anything that we can do to limit access points for unannexed land that is within our two-mile development area? As I come in and out of our community and see some of these estate lots that are coming in, and so we're getting all of these access points on these major roads in a row that we wouldn't allow, if it was within our city, we would have the backs of the property there and coming in through other roads. And so then as we grow, those access points will hardly be there. And so just kind of curious if any other city has had issues like that with unannexed, unannexed land outside of our city limits and accessing what will be future major roads.
It's a good question, I'm guess, are you talking about like North Third Street, Sheldon?
North Third Street, and we even approved a house out of the north gate of Big Creek headed east.
Okay.
And, and you can just tell the way it's set up, they're planning on, you know, moving west with more of those. And so it's just going to be, you know, a bunch of rows along a county road that will, in the future, be a, a major road in our community. But, but North Third, it would be the other, or Sheldon Road, or whatever we call it, as it gets out of town.
Okay.
Is, is, is the other obvious example, yeah.
I will have to follow up with you on that. With one of those plat of surveys that we did, we didn't think that we could get a sidewalk deferral agreement with property that was not in city limits, and we were able to do that, so that's something new that we're doing as we grow and we know that those estate lots will grow into city limits more than likely someday, we are getting sidewalk deferral agreements for those. I don't know about the access though, so I'd be happy to follow up with you.
Because the access spacing would be, it would be governed by SUDAS. So in the absence of anything else, SUDAS does, and it's based on the Astro Green Book DOT regulations, but SUDAS mandates what the separation for accesses, as well as intersections are, based on classification. So in the absence of anything else, that's what we review subdivision. But in terms of like, any other restrictions other than that, I guess, go back to your first question, the access management plan is the next step beyond a generalized ordinance. So if you wanted to pursue an ordinance where you take your collector streets and instead of, let me throw out a number, I think it's six hundred feet in commercial industrial, and you wanted to say seven fifty, that can be something you do in an ordinance. Or if you just want to target specific streets, that's what you've done this story. So Bridge Road is very prescriptive in where the access points are, it's essentially built out now, but it was very, very prescriptive. There are a few unused access points on the south side, those are prescribed where they're at. And the North Third Street is very, very prescriptive as well, to the point of that large open lot there north of the, I think it's the clinic there, that open lot with the drainage way that comes across it, they're not allowed an access off of their lot, they have to tie into the shared driveway from the south side. So the access management plans you have in place are very prescriptive, and it's not, they don't reference spacing. We look at specifically, okay, where are these entrances going to be? And you give them, you know, a sixty, eighty-foot window, so that they can kind of play with it based on their site layout, but you tell them that's going to happen.
And I'm kind of thinking of the future Whitetail Drive as being, or Parkway being our model, where we'll have a major arterial street, it really doesn't have any residential driveways hitting it. It'll just be backyards backing to it and they'll have to circle around, so you're, you know, just every block is the most that, that that street can be accessed, whitetail scooting across on our north side.
And I would say.
And our next arterials will be further north and some of those will be county roads. And when it gets to that point, we're going to have all these estate lot developments with access points are existing annexes.
Yeah, because Whitetail Parkway is a new alignment, doesn't have a road, so I think your concern is.
Oh, yeah, and I think that's, you know, I think that's how I would like to see our major streets look.
Because I, I would say we can control that on like Northeast Seventh, because of where it's going to go. But then it, when we get it over to Forty-Fourth, it's going to be bad, so.
Could you approve these estate lots with the understanding that there, there would be a requirement to tie into a future frontage road maybe? So like, I'm thinking of the one that you guys approved north of town before you get to the Oasis. So it's outside city limits currently, but it sits on that curve and that drive is there, well, so let's just say that farm ourselves and he builds a bunch of homes.
So if it's in your two-mile ETJ and it's already been subdivided once, we review it against the subdivision rates. And so that would involve, does it comply with the comp plan, does it, you know, does it comply with all that stuff? So I think, I think the issues in some of the places you're seeing where it's a whole bunch of repeat driveways, we're not going to have that issue long-term because of the way that we updated the stuff.
Okay.
It's, it's going to be, you know, we're going to be looking at the comp plan, so that one that you're specifically, if they wanted to go and subdivide again, I don't know that we would let them. And we're very cognizant of that stuff, because the last thing we want with the topographic challenges that Polk City has in certain places, we don't want to set up a situation like Third Street where you guys are kind of boxed in and you only have so much space that you can. That is something that we're definitely considering as we get those out.
So thanks for the discussion, I didn't want to get too far.
What, what about the senior housing on Parker and Washington, where are you with that?
They do not have a building permit, they have to get final plat approval also before they can start building and they haven't done that, so.
They did close on the property though.
Yes.
So it's, yep.
So it's moving.
They're a little behind as well.
But it's slower.
It's like everything's slow.
Except with On the Life.
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah.
I heard that they were doing that extreme remodel, where they come in for two weeks and it's done.
Well, my, my understanding is, is that they have a lease, that they have to get out, or that they're trying to get out, that they have a building they're from.
Yeah.
That was the understanding I had during the site. Yes.
Yeah.
During the site plan process, that was the indication they gave us.
Everybody's waiting for the interest rates to go down, building materials to go down, because it's all skyrocketing. And so everybody's pushing things back on. Interest rates go up, so the, it costs more to do business, costs more to manufacture stuff, building materials increase quite a bit, so they're just, they're just waiting.
Things do go down.
I have an E-S hardware update. They are waiting on the final plans for the different materials for the building, so again, building supply. Their likely start date now is October first. But that was the update.
If I'm correct, maybe they'll be open.
When are you going to be open? Uh, in the spring.
It's time for spring for us, for chemicals.
There you go.
Yeah. That, yeah, we'll be good.
So a few properties south of that, we have an approved site plan that's been sitting vacant an extended period of time.
That site plan has expired.
That's what I was going to ask, when, when does that expire?
It has.
Okay. Could be the Hy-Vee problem.
Yeah, it's, so it's eighteen.
Okay. Now, they won't build Starbucks in there now, not with the other coffee places.
Yeah, I agree.
It wasn't in the last plan.
It what?
They, they took that out of the last plan, that you guys approved.
Oh, okay.
Like take the gas station out of it, the gas.
They did. They took that out of it too. It was just going to be the, what was it called?
Dollar Fresh.
Dollar Fresh.
So I don't know if anybody's been to like Polk City Hall, that was what they converted that all type to. So it's essentially a Hy-Vee, a miniaturized version of a Hy-Vee store. It's got most of the same selection, with fewer brands, at least that's what the old school.
Quick start, send back.
Yeah, I agree.
Send back, as soon as they did that, yeah. All right, anything else? Okay. Thank you everybody, we'll see you next time, I lost a date. Thank you, everybody, we'll see you next time, I lost the date, eighteen.
Can I get a motion?
I make a motion.
It's fine, I don't want to. Thank you. Have a motion, or we have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote. Thanks.